I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting in the Orange County School Board. I feel like I've been called into the principal's office tonight because I see a lot of principals out there. Welcome back to our principals and our staff. I know you all really never leave, but I hope everybody got a little bit of rest this summer. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and join us in a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. Now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. All right, we're going to dive right into our meeting, and I apologize for keeping you all waiting. We have a pre-agenda meeting, as many of you know, before our regular meeting, and that's an opportunity for speakers to come before us on any topic. And we had a couple speakers tonight that really engendered quite a bit of discussion. What we're going to do is we're going to do our recognition of board members, and then we're going to dive right in before the strategic plan update into our administrator recognitions so we can let those folks go home because something does happen on Monday, according to my kids, who are counting down with great regret every day for the last next six days. And that is school starting, so we want to get them out of here and let them get some rest tonight. For the second year in a row, our procurement services department has been honored with the prestigious Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. This award is given to the winners during the 18th Annual National Conference, sponsored by the National Procurement Institute. The esteemed award can be earned by public and nonprofit organizations that obtain high scores based on select criteria designed to measure innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership, and e-procurement. OCPS Procurement Services provides the highest quality goods and services at the best value through competitive pricing while protecting our funds and adhering to policies and procedures. And this award validates the considerable efforts of the men and women in procurement services representing Orange County Public Schools. And I'm going to add to that parenthetically, really representing the taxpayers of Orange County and of the state of Florida. It is certainly not news to us that our district has sound business practices and is responsible stewards of district funds, but it is wonderful to hear that it's being recognized on a national level that we can share. They've enjoyed much success in the past year. The department was recently part of an incredible Sterling Award, which we set out as an aspirational goal for this organization and won the Governor's Sterling Award for organizational excellence because it signifies operational efficiency and something very important to this board and administration, customer service as well. Could you please stand if you're here representing procurement services so we can collectively recognize you? And I'm going to ask the senior director of procurement services, David O'Keele, to lead his team in front of the board table. We'd like to present you with a token of our appreciation, a certificate. And I also want to show you this beautiful award that they won from the National Procurement Institute, the 18th Annual Achievement Award of Excellence. And David, I'm going to totally go off script here. I want to thank you for your leadership and your entire team. And I want to thank Michael Eugene, our chief operating officer as well, for his leadership. Where's our walking wounded, Mike Eugene?
To the left.
Every time I see him, he has another appendage being operated on, but Michael leaves a very active lifestyle. But, you know, it's interesting. We have a bunch of instructional leaders in this room tonight. And when I got elected, I was pretty determined, and we've succeeded, I think, and I think we had done it before, to spend most of our time on academic and instructional issues because that's really what school boards are all about. But no matter how you slice it or dice it, we are the largest local government in all of central Florida. We have a $1.7 billion operating budget. We have an annual capital budget in excess of $500 million and a total capital program of $3 billion. And where I'm going with this is that's a lot of dollars being let out to contract, and that's a lot of money being put into the local economy. And this board, under Ms. Cadel's leadership before me and under the board members who have been on here for quite a while, we've made a very concerted effort to reform our procurement practices in the last five or six years, to end evergreen contracts, to go to more competitive bidding, to go to more hard bidding, to have a more transparent process. And I hear wonderful things about our procurement process in the last two to three years that frankly I did not hear when I first got elected. And I hear a lot of griping by people who don't like how tough it is. And they don't know this, but I love it when they gripe to me about how tough it is. So I want to thank all of you all and give you a round of applause, so thank you. And I hope I have these in the right order. Tanya? Jill, I'm sorry, I don't. I don't think we've had the pleasure of meeting yet. Nahid, I know you. Where's yours at? These are not in order. See Neela? Of course, it's always the last one. Roberto? Where'd you come from, Ed?
Valencia.
Oh, terrific, well, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you. How long were you at Valencia? Nice to meet you. I look forward to working with you. And you know what? I'm going to give you the best. All right. Dr. Jenkins, it's our favorite part of the meeting, and I mean that sincerely. This is when we get to recognize folks for their achievements in life, their promotions as senior administrators for OCPS. So I'm going to turn it over to you to recognize our newly appointed administrators.
Thank you, Chairman. We have 12 tonight. First, I'd like to introduce to you Tamara Barton Bugs, who was the resource teacher at Rock Springs Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Lovell Elementary.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank Chairman Soblet and Dr. Jenkins and staff for allowing me the opportunity to lead the teachers and students at Lovell Elementary to success. I'd also like to recognize my two former principals, Dr. Pender and Brian Burns, who have been great mentors, and they have provided me with great experience to prepare me for principalship. And my family, my in-laws, my sister, my brother, they have been there for me with great support. And my parents, who have provided me the unconditional love and support and instilled in me great, strong, I'm going to get a little shaky hair, morals and values so I can be successful. Thank you, Mom and Dad. And to my husband, who has been my rock, there for me for my ups and downs, and of great support. And my two personal cheerleaders, always, each and every day, they cheerlead me on. Every day, my daughters, Taryn and Kares. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next, we have Sanjay Brown, Osceola County Public Schools. Will be our new assistant principal at Discovery Middle School.
I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet, the school board of Orange County, for investing in me as a leader. Certainly, Dr. Jenkins, our superintendent, and her staff for affording me this opportunity to lead out at Discovery Middle School. I certainly look forward to the opportunity. And last but not least, I would love to thank my beautiful wife and son for their unconditional support over these past several years. Thank you all.
Pathiae Brown Carpenter was resource teacher at Palmetto Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Palmetto Elementary School.
Good evening. Chairman Bill Soblet, District Five Board Member Kathleen Gordon, and all the board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and all staff, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'd like to first thank my family for being here. My mother traveled to be here tonight, my husband, my children, and my families here, my friends, my Palmetto family is here, thank you so much. And my principal, Dr. Angela Osborne, who has been my principal for 12 years. She has been my mentor, she's been my support, my guidance, and my encouragement, and I thank you so much for that. The administrators for Palmetto, thank you so much. I appreciate the support and the opportunity. Thank you.
Michael Carbinia was the business education teacher at Oak Ridge High School. He will be the new assistant principal at Winter Park High.
Thank you, Chairman Soblet, and thank you to the school board. Thank you to Dr. Jenkins for this wonderful opportunity. I look forward to working with you, Ms. Cadel, after working with Kat Gordon and all our years together, so thank you. First, I'd like to thank, my previous principal was Dr. Leanne Bradshaw. She was a wonderful mentor to me, and I look forward to working with Tim Smith at Winter Park and all the wonderful knowledge he will impart on me. My close friend and colleague through everything, Mr. Coleman, Matt Coleman, my awesome mom, and my lovely wife, and my kids aren't here or else we'd all be screaming, so... Thank you very much.
Grace Hayes was language arts teacher at Avalon Elementary School. She will be the new assistant principal at Waterbridge Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Soblet, District Three Board Member Rick Roach, and all other members of the school board. I want to thank Superintendent Jenkins and staff. I am very excited to serve my learning community and very proud to be a part of OCPS. I want to thank my family. First, I have my parents, thank you for your support. I have my sister, who had to step out with my nephew, I apologize. Then I have my daughter back there sitting with my nephew and my sister, where they had to step out, but they, for their love and for their support, thank you. And most importantly, for my husband, that unconditional love and that support, and just for, thank you for taking that journey with me. Thank you.
Melissa Forinochi was resource teacher at Lawton Childs Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Cypress Springs Elementary.
I want to thank Chairman Soblet, Superintendent Jenkins, and the board for this opportunity, District One Board Member Joey Cadel. For this opportunity, I also want to thank my Lawton Childs family that's here for their support. I'm going to cry. Principal Sheila Burke, who always gave me guidance and direction in the way that I needed to go, never steered me in the wrong way, and was always there to support me whenever I needed anything. And my leadership team at Lawton Childs, they were my rock. And my parents, Don and Valerie Went, and my in-laws, Joe and Josie Forinochi, a dear friend of mine, who is now an assistant principal at Millenia, and of course, my husband, and I, along with him, have two daughters at home that would be running this meeting if they could, so they are at home. But thank you for this opportunity, and I am looking forward to working with Dr. Hannaf at Cypress Springs.
Jennifer Fugate was resource teacher at Colonial High School. She will be the new assistant principal at Lake Nona High.
Good evening. I'd like to first thank Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, and of course, Darryl Flynn, board member, for the opportunity again to work in the southeast learning community at Lake Nona High School. I'd like to thank my mentors, which were my previous administration at Colonial High School, Dr. Prince and Mr. Showalter. They definitely helped me get to where I am today. And my best friend, Rosina, who is here tonight, and Ms. Maggie Nampon, who is my new principal at Lake Nona High School. Thank you very much.
Nicole Hargritt was guidance counselor at Dillard Street Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Endeavor Elementary.
Good evening, all, to Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, and your staff, school board member, Mr. Rick Roach. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am grateful to be an Endeavor navigator now. I am very appreciative of Dr. Mark Shanoff, Mrs. Diana Greer, who pushed me from a grad degree all the way to the ELC, and I'm sure she will keep pushing me. Mrs. Jenkins, my former principal, my bestie here, just thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it.
Well, Saul Canio was instructional support teacher at Okoye High School. She will be the new assistant principal at Lake Nona Middle.
Thank you, good evening. I'd like to thank the chairman, Mr. Soblet, Ms. Flynn, and Dr. Barbara Jenkins, as well as the rest of the board, for the opportunity to serve the students and community of Lake Nona Middle School. I would also like to thank my former principal and assistant principal from Okoye High School, Mr. Floyd and Dr. Fox, for their mentorship and guidance. Thank you.
Kristy Logue was resource teacher at Bonneville Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Clay Springs Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet, my new board member, Mrs. Moore, and Superintendent Dr. Jenkins. Thank you so much for this opportunity, I'm very grateful for it. I'd like to thank Mrs. Kappa Bianca, my new principal, for being so welcoming, and I'm very excited to join the North Learning Community. I'd like to thank Mr. Wright, Dr. Diaz, Mrs. Sheehan, and Mrs. Boyd for molding me into the leader I am today and just being such great mentors to me. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my friends, my coworkers, and my family that's here with me tonight, supporting me. Dad, I'd never be here tonight without you with the confidence, the love, and the support that our family continues to give me. Craig, thank you so much for the continuous support and encouragement. I'm so excited to get started and join the Clay Springs family and community and to see a very successful school year, so thank you.
Stephanie Wicker will move from instructional coach at the STO to assistant principal at Eccleston.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet, District Five Board Member Mrs. Gordon, and all members of the school board for this opportunity. Thank you to Dr. Jenkins and staff for this chance to lead and support such a dynamic school. A special thank you to my Eccleston family for such a warm welcome and embracing me as part of their team. Finally, I'm extremely grateful for the encouragement, love, and support that, from my parents, Keith and Tammy Waika. I would not be here without their love and support. My husband, Jake Knell, who also is a fellow educator, has continually pushed me. And my mentors, Dr. Osborne at Palmetto, she really has supported me throughout this whole entire process, and Dr. Gullett. Thank you.
And finally, so we can put the tissues away, Janet Martin. Janet Martin was dean at Corner Lake Middle School. She will be the assistant principal at Corner Lake.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I stand here this evening as an immigrant child. I am from Jamaica, and I don't remember one day in my life when a parent helped me with my homework. But tonight, I am here because dreams do come true. I'd like to thank Chairman Soblet, Dr. Jenkins, and the entire board and her staff, Mr. Wright, Dr. Diaz. I'd love to thank my principal, Mr. Enrique Vella, and Pam for supporting me. I would love to thank my two daughters, products of Timber Creek High School, Kejann, my older daughter, who is leaving for FSU on Sunday, and my other daughter, Kayla. And I just want to say to them, the same way I succeeded, so can you. To my husband, Keith, I know I come home late, I know I bring the work home with me, I know I'm on the computer all night, but thank you all so much for your support. I couldn't have done it without you.
Dr. Jenkins, I don't know who coached him up this time, but I'm loving it because I usually don't even get mentioned. I was actually getting embarrassed there, but it's okay. You could have just stopped with Chairman Soblet. Vice Chair Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That showed you you're big dog. I really wanted to say, I know you heard a lot about Dr. Osborne, and I haven't even had an opportunity to give her all the love and affection, but it is coming. I just want her to stand so you can see who she is. I want her to stand. You just stand, just stand, let them look at you. And the reason why, because I think Pam, you loan her to us, and I want this board to go back and remember, a group of parents came and called us all kinds of names and said, "We put her in the poor area, and they were going to kill her," and that it was just the worst area in the world, the kids couldn't learn. But I want you to know, yes, they did not say that. They came in here, but they didn't realize it was my district and that I lived in that neighborhood. And, you know, I'm one block away from Americana Street. And they went up and down Americana Street and just went to pieces. But I think three or four of them wrote me the other day, and they said, "Ms. Gordon, I have to give it to you." Not to me, but the wisdom of the board, because that's what I told them, the wisdom of the board. We needed you, and you did not turn us down. And you're not the only principal in this county that have done that, but you took on a challenge of a school that had never received over a seat. And they had received a number of Fs, but for you to go out there and then to take your staff, you took Brown Carpenter with you. Brown Carpenter, will you stand? Okay, now you brought her, and then I, well, we got to let you go. If you're good, you got to go somewhere else. But I want you to know, you decided, you got with Dr. Jenkins, you got your team together. And I ask you to do one thing for me at Palmetto. I said, make the staff happy. Not only did you make them happy, they constantly invite me to little get-togethers. I can't go. I teach just like they do, you know, same hours and worse because I leave my job and come here. But I want you to know how happy you not only made the staff, you made the parents, you made the community, and you are an awesome, an awesome principal. And I'd like for you to give a round of applause. And people, we don't always, and I have to give the chairman a round of applause because he had to deal with the crowd that didn't want you to leave, but you left your love everywhere. And the reason why I'm bragging on her, just like I do Jenny and anybody else, that take that mild step to go into a community to show it doesn't matter what they look like, it doesn't matter what level the state gave them, it doesn't matter what score. It shows that when you go in with a team, and you go in and love people and work with children, you're going to go from an F to a high A. She went to an A. And you can give that in one year. No, in seven months. In seven months. She really didn't even have seven months to do that because of all of the testing. But I just want to love on you, I want to thank you, and your faculty and staff will be hearing from me because I cannot thank you enough, I cannot thank Dr. Jenkins enough for sending you to Palmetto, and you accepted it. And thank you. Thank you, Brown Carpenter. You are just amazing resource teacher. And you guys love that faculty, and they wrote me every day to say, "We're being loved." And even the children and the parents, so thank you one more time. And I just wanted to say, welcome to Stephanie, because Stephanie has worked, she's coming into our district, she's already worked with us, and we love her. We know you're going to, just help, Ms. Goodman. Y'all going to move, you know what to do. Just get us back to that high A. I know you can do it. You're in a beautiful new school, you'll be dedicating it soon. You have the support of the community, and above all, you have the support of the board. So we love you and welcome to school board District Five again and again and again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gordon. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, you did miss that last meeting because we had, I think it was 26 appointments. And so, Dr. Jenkins, after two or three gentle hints, suggested that just thank all those people down front.
We don't want to do that. I'm sort of digging this.
Yeah, so this week, we had change of procedures, and so you benefit. Anyway, just wanted to thank, we have a couple of new assistant principals coming into District Seven, and I'm just really pleased. Tamara Bugs and Kristy Logue. And both of them, you're going to be really busy building students and building programs. And also, both of those schools are under construction. And it's interesting because they both have the exact same floor plan, same building, so you all have to compare notes, we'll see which building gets done faster and better. But we just really love to have you in the North Learning Community District Seven. Welcome.
Mr. Roach.
Just wanted to acknowledge the parents of these leaders tonight. You actually, they were shedding tears with all the support and love that you've given them over the years, and I just think that's, I think that's great. It really is. I don't know if my kids would ever shed a tear over me, but it would be nice to think that that would happen someday. So I did notice that tonight, though, and on how emotional that is to get that promotion. But welcome, Grace and Nicole, to Eccleston, and, excuse me, to Endeavor and Waterbridge. They're great schools down the south part of my district, and I look very forward to working with you. And Mike, also, congratulations to you on the Oak Ridge, leaving Oak Ridge, but great leader, and I'm glad to see you moving up the ranks, so good for you.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too echo the sentiments of my fellow board members and congratulate everyone. It's, I hope you remember these tears of joy in February. We've got you on tape. So I really do want you to remember that. You've got tough jobs ahead of you, but I know you've trained well, and you'll do well to Sanjay Brown going to Discovery, Jennifer Fugate going to Lake Nona High School, and Wesel Canary? Did I get it right? Somewhat close. I want to welcome you all going to Lake Nona Middle School. And by the way, Lake Nona Middle School is very competitive with Discovery. I just, they've got a chart, they've got a chart in their hallway about which ones they want to beat, so just, I might have outed you right there. But, you know, I wanted to give everybody a heads up. And just welcome to District Two. I know you guys are going to do a great job, and you're going to be such an asset to the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Roach, thank you so much. I had whispered after I did Stephanie, I said, "Oh, my God, I forgot Michael." Michael, just stand, I have to let him stand because we're sending you over to the best, one of the best, her number is number one, that's none other than Joey Cadel. So she's going to take great care of you, maybe not as good as I did. But I want you to know, this is one of the smartest men that have passed through Oak Ridge High School. And not only the smartest, I want you to know that those students emulated him. And then, not only that, he wanted to move up, but the part about it, he know he still had a job to do. And the children love him, we love you. You're going to love Winter Park High, but you're going to miss Oak Ridge. Because we love you and thank you for helping us get that B. We needed it, and you were such an asset to us. And you didn't leave us, and we thank you. So please give him a round of applause for hanging in. These are some of the toughest schools. See, everybody could go and work in any good school. One teacher called me over the weekend and said, "I want to be in a school where there's no Title I." For all my life, I taught Title I. And I called the county office, and we did a three-way call, and I asked the Title I office to please list all the schools, and I didn't give the name of the person on the other end. I said, "Will you call up all the schools that are Title I?" And when we got through, she wrote me this morning, she said, "How can I just thank you?" Because I realized I lost count. We're teaching children. It's not about Title I. And Title I is only because the parents could not, they didn't qualify. You know, with the food, the income. So it's not that you were poor, but that's the way people look at it. So that teacher wrote me this morning and said, "Thank you." But she needs to thank the transition department because they gave her a lecture and a half about Title I. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. You know, I always like to have the children of our newly appointed administrators stand up and take a bow because it's not easy to sit through a meeting like this. Let us give you a hand. Let me close this out by saying thank you to all of our administrators, our principals, our assistant principals for all your hard work. It's a tried and true cliche, but nobody gets these levels without 99% perspiration. And I know you all spent countless hours, 12 months a year, working at your craft and at your trade. So thank you for that very, very much. I also like to always say at these recognitions that your loved ones should be very, very, very proud of you because we can really signify what this appointment means by distilling it down to one word, and that one word is trust. And your promotion signifies that this board and this administration trust your educational leadership. It trusts your judgment. And most importantly, it means that we trust you with our community's children. So congratulations. I always get in trouble for this. Go buy those kids some ice cream. And have a wonderful, wonderful school year. We're going to pause, so you can leave now. Thank you and congratulations. All right. We are going to jump into our strategic plan update. Tonight, we're hearing from, I hate to say one of our favorites, but somebody who continually makes us look good, Laura Gilbert. And Michael Eugene, our Chief Operations Officer and our Senior Director of Food and Nutrition Services. Ms. Gilbert, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our strategic plan. So Chairman, Board Members, and Dr. Jenkins, our Superintendent. Our goal is to be accessible to all OCPS students 100% of the time. And to do that, we measure the following goals. Maximizing student eligibility. Making sure that we use every single federal program that we can to make the program easy to participate in. Provide world-class service. Efficient and excellent customer service. We have a marketing campaign to engage our customers and provide high-quality products and menus. The strategic, I want to call your attention first to the first column. These are numbers that are gathered from July 1st to September 28th. And then to the fourth column where it says the students, total students directly certified. These are students who already have families who are qualified for federal benefits. And so we don't have to process an application. They already have one on file with another federal program. And as you can see, we progressively increase the number of students that already get federal benefits. And then if I could call your attention to this third column, that is the Provision 2 schools. That's one of those federal programs that it says, "This school is so high in poverty that we just want you to focus on the students who are eligible and not chase down those few students who are not eligible for the program." So it really does save in the time and resources, both at the district and the school level. And we had 21% of the students qualified by September 28th for this category. So the first column, the total students free applied, is probably the most important there. This means that of the students who qualify for free students, free meals, only 11% had to fill out an application. And you can see that that has progressively decreased from the year FY12. So I think that we're doing much better. We have a very efficient program. We had an unprecedented 100,000 students qualified for meals at no charge last year. Let's go on into the meal participation, and we'll start at the elementary schools. It increases breakfast every year. And I think our increases are coming at the, usually at the benefit of our students who are eligible for meals at no charge. It increased in our transformation schools by 10% last year when we were asked to step up and provide more services, which include the breakfast carts and the breakfast-in-the-classroom program. And it also gives us more customers moving through the point-of-sale, which gives us a challenge to figure out how to handle more and more students coming through. Last year, we finally broke kind of a benchmark that we'd hovered around at 84, 85, 86, and finally went to the 87% in lunch. And so that was achieved with a great sustained marketing program. For middle schools, remember that about five years ago, not all high schools or secondary schools had to offer breakfast. But five years ago, it was implemented district-wide. And we've continued to increase the numbers. I think that probably the most increase has come, again, from the students who are eligible for free and reduced meals. At lunch, in 2013, we were dealing with some new federal regulations that made the meals even healthier. And we had an adjustment period, but we're recovering from that adjustment period, and the participation is moving higher. For high school, we feel like if you can have any high school student eat breakfast at 7:00 in the morning, it's a success. But we have gone to great lengths, and you'll see the increase in participation up to 32%. But notice the participation rate for the free and reduced eligible students. That really needs some attention, and we're going to focus on that because the students need to have some kind of a breakfast before they start their school day. At lunch, we had a great recovery from 2013 again when we made the meals even healthier. But we are continuing to recover there. Staff availability is one of the things that we concentrate on to make sure that we have a trained and customer-friendly staff member to greet the students. And we have successfully decreased our absenteeism by about 6%. So we are at 92% staff availability and have the goal to go even higher this year. We must run as an efficient enterprise because we do not take any funds from the district. We are solely reimbursed from the USDA for each meal that we serve. Last year, we had an increase up to $2.93 per meal, which was a very high number. But we do achieve some efficiencies and save costs in looking at a five-year commodity bid that we've decreased our food costs by about $800,000 just because of that five-year bid. And we're a founding member of the Urban School Food Alliance, and that is a national program operating in six very large districts. And because of the benefit of all of those districts working together, we have an accumulated amount of $230 million that are spent on food and supplies every year. Our central kitchens decreased by 11% the meal cost. And next year, we're going, because we've increased the capacity of those central kitchens, we are going to four central kitchens, and we should realize some more efficiencies next year. So we have a healthy fund balance, which is 26% of our revenue. And we do have three months of cash in the bank so that if, in the meantime, when the checks don't come or the federal government is a little bit late sending our check, we don't have to borrow from the district. Thank you.
Superintendent comments?
Chairman, members of the board, that is our strategic plan update. Certainly open to any questions you might have and to hear your discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And thank you so much, Ms. Gilbert. Ms. Cadel.
I really don't have a question as much as a comment. In a political year, you're out and you meet a lot of people. And every time I run into Adam Putnam, no matter where I am, he keeps saying, "I keep telling Polk County they need to call you and find out what you're doing because you guys are doing a great job." And constantly, people are coming up and talking about the leadership and what we're doing and how we're going about it. And so to the superintendent and your team, it's really, it's really refreshing to hear that we're doing food service the way that we are. And many, many years ago, I can remember when Brookshire first wanted to have cut-up fresh fruit. And they did not want it in thick syrup. And you would have been, you would have thought that as a community, we were trying to move the needle so far. It was like, "We can't do that." And at that time, Suzanne Ackley was principal, and she kept going, "Oh, yeah, we can figure it out." And Deb Watson kept going, "Oh, yeah, we can figure it out." And so fast forward where we are today, and all of the fresh fruits and vegetables. And I had someone who has, who is a parent of a soon-to-be first and third grader who came home and said that her son always talks about when the strawberries are on the menu because it has, is it Florida Fresh, Farm Fresh? And so he tells his mom all the time that they were, they're having Florida farm-fresh vegetables at school, and he wants to eat them that day. So then, looking to the future, I had an opportunity to go out and see my grandchildren in Denver. And, you know, we always talk about how healthy everybody is in Denver. Well, I was very fortunate to get to go to two birthday parties on the Saturday I was there. Now, if it was a birthday party here in Orlando, you would, probably would have seen pizza and, you know, who knows what else? Out there, there were like big bowls of fruit, and there were all kinds of vegetables. And I mean, it was the norm out there. That's what these children grow up and they're eating. So, you know, I think with some of the work we've been doing and so how hard it was in the beginning, I expect to see that Orange County students and, you know, the central Florida community that will probably look like that in another couple of years or three years. But I mean, I was just fascinated. I just sat there and watched the food and watched the children eating all the fresh food products. And when you talked about ordering our chicken, like sending the commodity chicken to the kitchen to get it prepared to be like some kind of oriental chicken or something, I was like, "Now, that is innovative." So hats off to all of you.
Ms. Gold.
I certainly echo Board Member Cadel's compliments because having worked for a healthcare district that was partnering with you a long time ago on healthy food and exercise with our school nurse program, it's amazing how far it's come. I have two things. One is, high school students are challenging. I saw that in your statistics. I know that with my own children. And you almost, it's very funny. It's like this switch goes off in their head. They've been good little breakfast eaters right up until like ninth grade, and then all of a sudden, there's no breakfast anymore. And they start craving sugar like mad, even when you keep primarily healthy things in your house. So, you know, hats off to you. But how do you plan to market to that group that has all kinds of junk marketed to them since they have the highest expendable incomes out there in this USA?
One of our, the best marketing program that we did in the high schools last year partnered with these commodity vendors. So the first partner was Tyson, and they lent us their chefs. They came up with 15 new recipes for us, and we tested those. We got it down to about three that both would work in our kitchens and the students approved. And when we went out to the high schools, we called it Truck of the Month. And the managers had the ability to market that and announce that the food truck is coming. And so it doesn't look like the cafeteria. It looks like a food truck. And we had as much as a 42% increase on the days that that truck was at the school. So not looking like a cafeteria was one of the best things that we did.
Fantastic.
We found that when we surveyed the students who ate at the truck, they did not feel like the cafeteria had real food, but the food truck did. So we were able to tell them that this was prepared in the kitchen. It was just served off the food truck. And we continued to look at those students and had a 42% engagement of students who had never participated began participating three to five times per week in the next month.
That's fantastic. My son did request to put something different on the food truck that you can't get in the cafeteria. That was a request that they had. My second, kind of, I guess it's a challenge because this is really curriculum-based as much as the food-based. When Ms. Moore and I were in NSBA in San Diego, we had the privilege of touring some of the schools out there. And we went with the intent of looking at kind of their digital learning. But in the, in two of the elementary schools, they had partnered with the local growers. Put, one was putting a full farm on the school campus. But they were teaching nutrition and math, and it was a multiple-depth curriculum. I would still love to see that. I mean, that goes back to the Health Central days when we were trying to bring that kind of, you know, match the curriculum in food and nutrition and tying math and science and measuring and all of those things, especially in elementary school, together. Are you looking at those kind of partnerships? Are we looking at some of that opportunity using, you know, the great resources we have on the facility side to match with the curriculum side? Guess that's more for the superintendent than...
I'm going to need you to repeat that question. I'm sorry.
Could we create some curriculum around some of the healthy food standards with food and nutrition, our local growers, and matching to common court, I'm sorry, Florida state standards?
It was the second part that threw me. Okay. So let me answer it sort of twofold. Winter Park High School has a wonderful healthy initiative plan growing, plan that's going, and it is student-initiated. And it is a part of one of the classes that they participate in, but it's in the marketing realm. It's a brilliant way to sort of connect the two. But it is from the marketing, and they are the ones that pushed the Healthy Kids Initiative at Winter Park High School. Keep in mind, every school has a committee that's supposed to look at health initiatives, healthy schools initiatives. When it comes to actually matching it with the new Florida standards, I'd have to have staff research that for you. There might be a potential fit in the health standards. It certainly wouldn't be in marketing. That's just been their creative way of getting after that same exact issue. But I think even if it doesn't fit into the new Florida standards, I would love to see student-initiated, student-led programs, clubs, activities that, because they really listen to each other much more than they pay attention to the adults. And so at Winter Park High School, for example, they've been able to get students, they put out fresh fruit and encourage them to come by for taste tests. They do fruit smoothies and encourage them to come by and have a taste. They wear T-shirts saying, "Park in the farthest lot so you can walk and get your exercise every morning." And they've been able to get quite a bit of traction with their peers. And so I'd like to, we really would want to look at replicating those efforts more so than worrying about an exact fit. I don't know that we would find an exact fit in the new Florida standards.
One of the opportunities might be at Maxi Elementary with the gardens. Yeah, well, anywhere where we have gardens. I know the West Orange Healthcare District in particular was looking at sponsoring gardens, but doing, because they tied them, in the elementary schools that we saw in California, they tied in the math and the science component to cooking. So the day we were there, they were making healthy tortillas. And they had to measure out on the tortilla and pie the different foods. And they could only use four foods or five foods, and it had to be the measurements, and they had to then transfer. Is that two-thirds? Is that one-third? Is it one-eighth? Is it one-quarter? And they were also measuring the growth of the food and things like that. So if there, if there are ways to do that, I think it makes food more fun. And it makes especially vegetables more appealing if you've been participating in their growth or something. Well, yeah, maybe.
Ms. Moore.
You're bringing back memories, Mrs. Gilbert. Remember that also, they had the cisterns at the end of the roof line to collect the water so they could water their gardens. Of course, land was at a premium in San Diego, so they had every inch in space used up with growing something. So it was really an interesting trip. I had a question that, Dr. Jenkins, it might be for Ms. Gilbert or, and it's a facilities question, so it might go to Mr. Morris. But when we were at Wheatley Elementary last night, I was looking at the kitchen. But when we were at Wheatley Elementary last night, I was looking at the kitchen. It seemed like, because I know we're going to the centralized kitchens, that there's fewer items in there. It really looked like, you know, there was the serving line and to keep items hot and cold, and I didn't see, you know, so much equipment in terms of being able to prepare food. So, that was my first question. The second was, maybe you can tell us, Mrs. Gilbert, where those four centralized kitchens might be?
For the first question, Wheatley will not be a finishing kitchen. They will not be receiving food from a central kitchen. They'll do the full preparation. What we've done is we standardized and developed a prototype of just exactly what is needed. And because our produce has gone up, we needed more walk-in freezers and refrigerators. And because only one component of our school lunch is heated and one part is cold, we can trim down the amount of equipment that we need in the kitchen. So, the second part is for the...
Can I ask you just, so, okay, so then, I thought we got told that they were going to be receiving, but they will be preparing food there?
I believe so. I can check. I'll get back with you.
Okay, because I didn't get back to look at the freezer and the cooler, but that was, so can you tell when you go into the new facilities, if it's receiving, is it a difference, are there different specs depending on...
Yes, there are. There are different specifications for finishing versus a full prep. But I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, and then the four?
The four central kitchens are Coey, Oak Ridge, Edgewater, and Winter Park.
The high schools?
Mm-hmm.
That's interesting. Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. On your charts, because I just think I missed this, on your charts, let's see, page, starting with four, with the elementary participation, now, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding these, the charts, right. Okay. Because does this mean, like in the red, for instance, that's the percentage of students, elementary students who are free and reduced lunch?
Right.
So, we've got 87% of our elementary students that are free and reduced lunch?
That are eating meals. No, it's not 87% of the students are eligible. This is the percent participation of those, all elementary? And then, the blue is, I mean, the blue is of all, and the red is the percent of the students who are qualified for free and reduced?
Go ahead, if you just let me...
Well, just, that's what we're struggling with. So, only two-thirds of all elementary kids are eating lunch?
Our lunch.
Well, it's...
Our lunch?
It's 66% of all students, yes.
Are eating our lunches?
Right.
Okay, all right, that's what was throwing me whether, okay, our lunches?
No, it's of the students now who are eligible for free and reduced. Then, 87% of those students participate.
Okay, so, wait a minute. So, what's the blue, then? I'm sorry.
So, the blue is percent of all elementary students, and the red is the percent of just those who qualify for free or reduced meals and are eating.
Okay. Okay, I think I have it. Because I was looking at these figures, and I was thinking, you know, with the economy supposedly coming back, you know, I think these numbers are startling if it was, if that was truly what it was, 87% of our elementary school populations, I thought that was startling, but that's not it, then.
I think the base of the economy doesn't really reflect what's happening with our children. So, we may see an increase in the number of children falling into poverty.
And I think that's a significant, I mean, we know, we know it's happening, but to see it here with figures, I think that's just a significant piece of knowledge. I mean, we already know. We already know that we have more Title I schools than it grows every year, but, you know, it's just a comment. It's just an observation that I make. It's tough to see that we have so many kids that are in poverty.
Of the true number of students?
So, it's sort of inverse. So, what is our percentage of...
Last year, we ended the year at 65.4% of all students qualified for free and reduced meals.
And that's our highest, isn't it? So, I mean, even that continues to grow. So, I understand what it is, but I think when you see these figures, even if you just pull them all together, it still is disheartening. You're right. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I had one more question. When you're talking about the centralized kitchens and the warming kitchens and that, do you have a list, just so that we can know which schools have what?
I can send you one.
It's just curiosity. Thank you.
Gordon.
Yes, thank you. I briefly mentioned to Dr. Jenkins in the last board meeting on the July 28th, there was a report from when we did the state meeting from the Community Action Board with Teresa Jenkins. And I know, Mr. Morris, we had talked about our campuses. So, we were wondering, Dr. Jenkins, the Mead Garden and all of the Paramore Kid Zone, the out on the east side where Darrell is and Rick, where Rick Roach is, where they're building these gardens. They took us all through town to see the gardens, and we ended up at Lou Gardens. But that was the 13 different municipalities. This was a state conference. Excuse me, and the report, the report is in board docs. We didn't put everything in there. But we went to all of the food gardens, and they said they pretty much created it because of the Fern Creek. Remember with the kids not having the food? And I'm asking, with that in mind, with the French vegetables, and also, I know you've done some things with First Lady, Michelle Obama. And we talked to Mr. Morris, and the board talked about gardening and putting these gardens on our campus with fresh food, like Ms. Cadel talked about. We can grow our own. And I know Carver Middle School has asked us to put their garden back. They had a complete, you know, we had to vote it out, and we couldn't keep it up because it was a little bit too much. That was in 2000. But now, since they're getting a new school, they're asking to create the food garden because the food garden fed the community. And when we took the bus tour, like you all did, like Ms. Gold and Ms. Moore did in California, we took it right here in Orange County. And they took us to all of those food gardens, one right out on Colonial. We went out there. There was another one on the east side of Colonial, one over, they were just everywhere. And like I said, we ended up in Lou Gardens, and they talked about, all of the food goes to harvest, what do you call that? Second harvest, or they give it to the school kids. So, what is it that would help us to create this? And I don't know if Mr. Morris got an opportunity to speak to those gentlemen, but UCF is willing to work with us, and Lou Gardens, and, oh my goodness, in Ms. Cadel's district. So, did you, were you able to follow up on that? Mr. Chairman, if I could direct that question, and Dr. Jenkins to Mr. Morris, were you able to follow up on any of that? Because they would like to see the gardens on the campus and this food be used, I don't know where that, you know, in the cafeteria, or the children are able to take the food home. So, where are we going with that? Because that would pretty much fall under your auspices and your department. And then, but I wanted to find out of Mr. Morris, was he able to connect with any of the gentlemen on that?
Ms. Gordon, we've connected with those gentlemen. Each one of my client liaisons handles all the schools, is working with the principals. There are a lot of principals that definitely want a garden program, and then there are other principals that don't. But we're working with the schools on that right now. As far as the produce, I think that's something that probably Ms. Gilbert can answer as far as the vegetable garden type.
All right. So, and then, can you let us know where you are with the presidents, the First Lady, Michelle Obama, with her program? Because I know you were tied into that, and where it fits within this presentation.
So, I'll answer the second question.
Because I heard it was a lot of money. I did.
Oh, the increased nutrition regulations did increase the cost.
That's right.
But I think that we have decided to not complain about doing the right thing. We are going to find more efficiencies in our program and maybe even work legislatively to increase the amount of reimbursement. And I think what they were recognizing us for is that we do, in fact, you all have stricter standards sometimes than the federal government does, because you believe that when they're in school, the children need nutritious things. And so, it wasn't just a recognition of me, it was a recognition of our wellness policy and all of the work that you have done to really support the idea that the children do need nutrition at school.
You were a leader in that for us, and we really thank you for that. One thing that I was impressed with, when Dr. Jenkins and I, when we were in Washington, I had an opportunity to go to the Department of Agriculture, and I was just amazed, you know, everything is concrete, but they actually had a garden there with all the fresh fruits, just like we have in Ms. Cadel's area. Ms. Cadel, there must have been three or four gardens they took us to in your area. I was just amazed how they were out there just selecting the vegetables, and they were doing the very same thing. So, I don't know if they stopped anybody, but everybody was just going in and picking the okras and everything that, you know, that was there at the Department of Agriculture. So, they had a garden, they have a garden right in the front of the building, which just amazed me. And people were in there just selecting, I guess they probably had a time that they could go in and select it. But I was, I thought that was so impressive with Mr. Morris and you getting together. I think this would be so nice on our campus if we could get that done, and then the children would also have fresh fruits and vegetables that they could take. So, thank you so very much for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Well, Ms. Gilbert, thank you for the presentation. Just as an FYI, there was a great article in the Wall Street Journal yesterday about how school lunches today are far more nutritious than lunches students bring from home. And there was a Pennsylvania study, I believe, or no, it was a Massachusetts study, and it was comparing the nutritional quality of school lunches compared to brought from home. One last quick question, and I know it's always a tough one to answer, but maybe it's not for you, is what percent of the federal poverty level for a family of four do you have to be at to qualify for free lunch? And I know it's a sliding scale for reduced after that, but is it 200%?
It is 130% of poverty for the free, and for the reduced, it's 180%.
Okay.
And so, just to give you an idea, for a family of four, it's about $25,000 a year income.
For the poverty level, so, wow, that's really low. So, you're only at about $32,000, $33,000 to qualify for, can you imagine that, trying to support a family of four on $32,000? Sad commentary. All right, Ms. Gilbert, thank you very, very much. All right, that was excellent. We're gonna go ahead and move into our consent agenda. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. Anybody who would like to address an item on our consent or our non-consent agenda may do so by completing a yellow card that looks like this. You can receive this card from Ms. McGill, the lady at the far-left-hand side of the dais. I'll call you to speak when that agenda item comes up. You will have at that time three minutes to testify before the board and address the issues that you do want to address. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
We do, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the agenda item for student expulsions is withdrawn. There are no student expulsions. And then, we have added item... It could be a sign of things to come. We can certainly hope so. That is item 502, by the way. And then, item 1601 was an emergency item to be added. Those are the bus routes for the school year that is fast approaching.
All right, thank you. I find cause to amend the agenda as requested. I can have a motion to do so. It's been moved by Vice Chair Gordon, seconded by Mr. Roach. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. All right, we are in item 3.01 of our agenda, which is modifications to our 2014-15 Code of Student Conduct. Dr. Jenkins, who will be handling this for us?
Jared, they're not here.
Mr. Chairman, I see Jared Brooks in the back, and I'm coming forward.
Okay. Mr. Brooks, welcome. I love that I want to throw you all a curve ball.
Mr. Chairman, board, Dr. Jenkins, for the agenda item, this is in light of the legislative updates and Department of Education, there are certain statutory changes that are required. We are having a rule development workshop on Thursday in which this item will be more thoroughly discussed. This was put as an emergency item to make sure that it was amended before the start of the school year on Monday, so that we can go ahead and start processing the documentation to get to the students with the addendum. And then, on Thursday, we'll go through the PowerPoint in more detail to provide to the board.
Okay, so tonight, we don't need to take any action. It was just a placeholder. Mr. Rodriguez, is that correct?
No, you actually, Mr. Chairman, if there's any speakers, you can take those. You're adopting it as, in essence, an emergency rule. But with any rule that you adopt on an emergency basis, you would bring it back, still have to go through the traditional process. So, you would have your work session next week on the 14th. Any further input at that time? And then, it will eventually be adopted at a subsequent school board meeting. But if your failure to adopt today may put you in non-compliance with some statutory changes that took effect this past legislative season.
Okay. Threw me a curve now. So, we do need to take up a motion to, and I'm gonna ask you for how to phrase that motion.
Just a motion, well, I mean, assuming there's no one here to speak on the matter, you're just gonna take up a motion to adopt the changes to the Student Code of Conduct. Ms. Moore is gonna speak on 3.01, and then, if there's no one else, then you'll be able to adopt 3.01.
Just so I'm clear, at this time, until we go through the workshop process, we don't actually have any changes that we're adopting tonight.
You are, and they should be attached.
Okay. Okay, I just found them. I just found them. Thank you. Okay. All right, let me ask this, if anybody would like to speak on this, I've got you, Ms. Moore, I'm about to go to you. If anybody else is here to speak on the proposed changes, modifications to go to student conduct, please fill out a speaker card. Ms. Moore, welcome. You know the drill, name and address, and three...
Diana Moore, representing CTA, 1020 Webster Avenue. I'm surprised that I'm coming up to speak on this issue, because I had put in a card for another issue, because we have a settlement agreement that we did, instead of going to arbitration, that stated our new process for any changes to the Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Rodriguez was there that day when we signed that settlement agreement with Mr. Kenrick Pratt, on the notification to teachers to have input into this process at a rule development workshop, and then it would be brought to the school board. So, to see that it's going the opposite, I'm a little surprised, and that's why I wasn't expecting to get up and speak on this issue. So, I'm not sure why we're doing it, the opposite of the settlement agreement that we agreed to, but I'm here to ask that question.
Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to fill that?
Absolutely. Once again, we're making statutory changes. So, Ms. Moore, with all due respect, it's an item that's on the agenda. It's noticed, just like everyone else in the public can understand and appreciate that it's an item that's on there. There is a workshop, as I just indicated, it's scheduled for next Thursday, the 14th, okay? The reality is, the school board has to take action on these items pursuant to statute, because there have been requirements from the legislature. You're certainly here, you can speak to those, just like anyone else in the public. And then, you can also come back on the 14th and ask for any changes, corrections, additional modifications you would like at that point in time.
Okay, so let me ask a question. According to our contract, the Student Code of Conduct is supposed to be given out the first week of school. And so, if there are changes being made today, and it's going to be available out online, is there a letter going to parents stating that there will be a rule development workshop, and that there are some potential changes that are going to take place?
My understanding is, the amendments that are being made are being attached and provided to students and parents at this time. That's why this change has to take place today before they receive their information. If the school board subsequently makes additional changes to the Student Code of Conduct, doesn't accept all these changes in the more permanent emergence, in the more permanent rule provisions, which is what they're taking up this next Thursday and following at a subsequent board meeting, then there would be further notification to members of the public, as well as parents, indicating what those changes were.
So, to just clarify, Mr. Chairman, what is going to be sent out to teachers to notify them of the Code of Conduct that goes out, usually in paper format, to parents to discuss with their students, sign the back sheet, and be brought back to school? But now that it's online, what's being communicated to parents and teachers?
All right, if you could have a seat, Ms. Moore, we'll answer that question. I will say this, and Mr. Brooks, you can come on up to the podium to address that if you'd like, or Dr. Jenkins. I just skimmed through them. I don't see any substantial changes at all from what was already in the Code of Student Conduct. But Dr. Jenkins, do you want to...
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not up for debate. There is legislation, what they like to call the Pop-Tart gun rule, that is legislation, where children are not to be disciplined for eating a Pop-Tart.
where children are not to be disciplined for eating a Pop-Tart so that it's in the shape of a gun and using it, or any other foolishness that could be treated as a serious infraction. It is now in statute, and we had to include it in our code. And we had gone to print, so there is a one-sheeter that gives both parents and students those revisions, that and a couple of other items that are specifically from statute. We just got that information handed down to us late. It has to go out, it has to be enforced, because it is now statute. We have a provision to make sure that that, those changes are provided. And by the way, we've had the electronic version of the code for, I believe this is our third year. And we provide hard copies to those families or anyone who says they would like a hard
Mr. Brooks, do you want to add anything to that? Okay. I'm just going to editorialize. It's such an abuse of the legislative process to pass a law on this one isolated incident, but.
It wasn't a law.
Yeah, Mr. Roach.
I just want to make sure I understand. So I guess I'm talking to you, Mr. Rodriguez, on this. But it sounded, at first, it sounded like we were doing this opposite, that we were taking action on something that we were opening up for discussion two weeks from now, and then the vote would be immaterial at that point. So that's not true. This is something that came down last minute from the state. We're required by law to pass this tonight. Am I okay so far? This has to be passed by us. This is not something that's open to, certainly people can comment on it, but we don't have any free wiggle room here on this.
You always do. I mean, as a board, you could always choose not to adopt the changes to the student code of conduct, which means that your code of conduct would not be in compliance with Florida law and the requirements imposed by the legislature. But the reality is, is that as your legal advisor, we are advising you, you need to make these changes, because the legislature has said these are changes that have to be incorporated in the student code of conduct.
Okay, well, I mean, that's pretty cut and dried. I'm not suggesting that we don't follow this particular law. There would be other laws that I would suggest, but this wouldn't be the one. So I just want to make sure that this is something that people don't have the traditional weighing in and debating, and we come up and vote on this. Nothing is being violated in that regard. Mr. Chairman, help me out, I want to get off this.
I'm just wondering if we've let the Pop-Tart company know about this nefarious act, anyway. Ms. Caddell, I'm being a little bit of a smart aleck, because I just think it's a ridiculous piece of legislation.
I've gone through here and looked, and it's basically, we had to add two letters to Level 3, physical attack and sexual assault, the Pop-Gun Law, and there was something about hazing. And those are the only changes that are here, and it's like it's definitions. Battery was changed to the name physical attack. Exact same wording, just the name of the title. And I saw some talking about hazing, and then the whole new thing is the Pop-Tart Law that has to be added. But they made us add to infractions, we had to add an XYZ that once again ties with the other, hazing, physical attack, and sexual assault, and they're all defined. So, you know, those are the changes that I see in red. And so I feel like we need to go ahead and do what we need to do to get this out to our parents in a timely manner, knowing that we got it late, once again.
Okay. I would agree. That's how I read it as well. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Rodriguez, I was just wondering, because of the nature of this, and it looks, if you were just looking at the motion, the second, and the vote, it would seem that the school board is doing something, you know, a little bit odd and out of order. So, and I understand that we just had discussed it, so if you saw the meeting on TV, it would make perfect sense. Do you think it would be appropriate to add some language or something to the motion, so that's a little more clear?
It's your prerogative. I mean, you're, you are just amending your student code of conduct to comply with Florida law, or changes in Florida law regarding requirements in student code of conduct. As I said, the essence of this is, you're making a change to the code of conduct. The code of conduct is a rule. So in essence, any change you make tonight is not a permanent change, it's sort of a temporary change. You still have to make permanent changes on a rule, and that's why it comes back on a workshop a week from now, or two weeks from now, the 14th, and since nine days. And then it'll eventually come back as another public hearing. When you get that next session, and nine days, and when it comes back in a board meeting, you will essentially be voting on this, on the same changes here, unless there's been other changes recommended by staff, which may be completely different. But that, my understanding is, it'll be the same exact changes you're seeing here tonight.
Right. So do you have, is that your recommendation in terms of the motion?
Yes, just a motion to conform the student code of conduct to comply with Florida law.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, when we get there, that, I guess that's why I asked that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Flynn.
I think we should move on, and I'd like to, if, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the changes that includes the required code of conduct changes from the state. I know that's not very eloquent, but I say, let's move on. I make a motion that we pass it.
Okay, is there a second to that? Seconded by Mrs. Robinson. All right, any further discussion or debate of the motion? Everybody understand the motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted. All right, we are now on the consent agenda. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda. Ms. Moore would like to speak, I believe, on agenda item six, grants. Okay, Mr. Mitchell, welcome. Mr. Mitchell, you're new to our district, but experiencing these things, if you could start with your name and address for the record, sir.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mark Erwin Mitchell, I'm the executive director of the Orange County Service Unit, Classroom Teachers and OESPA. So I wanted to speak on the agenda regarding the grants that are before the board tonight. And it's come to the attention of the, of the Orange CTA that you're considering entering into various arrangements with regards to grant monies to provide, among other things, instructional services to Orange County students. As you know, the Orange CTA is the exclusive bargaining agent for all instructional personnel employed by the district. And as you also know, or perhaps don't know, the school, the school district and CTA have formed a joint grants committee, agreed to by the parties in the collective bargaining agreement at Article 2.6A6. And that was created jointly by the parties to review grant arrangements that may affect the terms and conditions of employment for those employees exclusively represented by the Orange CTA. So tonight, teachers and their union are perplexed to see on your agenda a consideration of several grant applications which appear on their face, while to carry out laudable goals for the district and for students. They also may affect represented workers' terms and conditions of employment. So unfortunately, teachers and their union cannot support the board's approval of these grants at this time because of district management's failure to refer them to the joint grants committee set forth in the union's contract. I'm informed that the last meeting of the grants committee was in September of 2013. We look forward to receiving notice in a timely manner and an opportunity to discuss these matters before they appear on a public school board agenda without following the guidelines of the union contract. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time. Good to see everyone.
All right, Mr. Mitchell, thank you. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, members of the board, just for your clarification, there is no need for the union to approve our grants. That has not been our practice. We do not bargain grants. However, we have had a grant committee that could give input anytime we have a grant, including Title I migrant education, adults with disabilities, 21st Century Learning Grants for the Boys and Girls Club. They do not require bargaining. If the union should believe there is an impact, they bring it to the table and ask to impact, bargain it. But it has not been our practice, nor will it be our practice, to receive approval from the union for grants. That was the Race to the Top Grant, where we had to have that sign off. These are entitlement grants that do not require a sign off by the union. I want to repeat, though, so everyone is clear, the grants committee was invited to give input on grants, and certainly can do that in the future. And anytime they believe there is an impact on working conditions, it should be brought to the bargaining table. It is not, we do not hold up our federal grants and our state grants for any approval from the union.
Mrs. Robinson.
My question is, if there is a grants committee to discuss and just do an overview, possibly, of the grants that are being considered, is that not something that we could do with the CTA? It just, it sounds like the grants committee hasn't met since last September. Do you see where I'm, what I'm asking? Just so they could decide whether they think it's going to impact it, or you think we should pass it, and then they bargain it after that? So that's how you perceive that it should happen?
Yes, Ms. Robinson, that has been our practice. Federal entitlement grants, we have never brought to the table for approval. Impact bargaining means you believe there's an impact, you bring it to the bargaining table, and we have a discussion around it. The grants committee has not been a pass or failed to pass different grants that we have worked on. It's simply been for discussion and input. And if it's timely, if they meet in a timely manner and the information is shared with them, that certainly is harmless. But we would never hold up our grants going to the board for such critical areas.
I'm not suggesting that they approve or disapprove. I'm suggesting that, that we allow them a chance to hear them, not before they come before us.
I'm sorry, it's not always timely. For entitlement grants, and Title I, and migrant education, and students with disabilities, we will not hold those back. We get those to the board agenda table expeditiously, but we can certainly share it with them.
So then your recommendation at this point is that now that, tonight, if we approve these tonight, that then, after they've had it, could they have a committee to
Absolutely, absolutely.
To meet and discuss these and determine whether they think they'll be impacting?
Absolutely. The union has that ability to bring impact bargaining to the table at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roach.
Probably somewhere in there, the answer is there that I asked. Well, let me just clarify, first of all, Ms. Superintendent, the, I didn't hear it so much as a disagreement about the grants themselves. I heard about the instructional component within the grants, is what I, I heard them talking about. So diving down that deep, there's still no violation on the board by passing this with an instructional component attached to it. And they, and they would have an opportunity, as Mrs. Robinson pointed out there, with her, you pointed out to her about challenging this after the board approves it?
Impact bargaining is always at their leisure. On the agenda, we have 21st Century Learning Centers, that's through the Boys and Girls Club. We have Title I for migrant education. Most of those are continuation grants that we've had for years. We have adults with disabilities, migrant school readiness through the Early Learning Coalition, most entitlement, most of them continuations. But nothing prohibits the union from bargaining the impact if they believe working conditions are impacted by it.
And I stopped you before you answered this, and I apologize, but the, back to the instructional component, there's nothing in there that would take away jobs or hurt the job opportunities for teachers that we have employed?
I'm not sure what you mean by hurt the job.
If there's teachers that, I heard it as, in these, within these grants, there were possibility of instructional components going on that might interfere with employment with our other teaching staff, et cetera, that we have employed.
That would be impact bargaining.
But that is possible?
We don't have, I don't see those in these, like a grant like Teach for America is not on this agenda.
Okay, all right.
Okay, board members, any other questions? We do have one other speaker, somebody well-known to us, Ms. Wendy Dormall. Mr. Dormall, if you could name an address for the record.
Hi, Wendy Dormall, 2914 Goldenview Lane, Orlando. And I just wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Robinson. You clarified what we were trying to get across. We do have a grants committee, I am a member. We were told we'd be meeting probably quarterly, and we haven't met since. We reviewed the Race to the Top Grant, and then we were told we'd be giving the grant to review again and again. But then we just found the, to give input, and then we just were given the final version. So maybe the point that needs to be made is that we'd like to have input on grants that affect instructional personnel, so that we could have our committees, not just the grant committee, but other important committees. I'm the co-chair of the evaluation committee. We haven't met since February, and then things get clogged up in the bargaining. So it would be great if we could have our committees meet in a timely manner, and we could have input to these important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dormall. Wendy, I'm sorry, can I, will you yield to a question for me? Can I ask you a question? If you don't mind, I'm sorry to bring you back down here, but I'm a little slow at the switch.
Okay.
Understand your point. These grants tonight that we're addressing to go to Mr., what I believe was Mr. Roach's point, are there any grants in these grants tonight that you feel like impact the teaching profession, at least insofar as jobs go?
These grants, I haven't reviewed. And that's what I'm trying to speak to, is that we haven't met, and we haven't been given an opportunity to review them.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough, thank you. All right, Ms. Gould.
I love communication. It's my, one of my favorite things is that everybody talks about everything, but I'm also a professional fundraiser for not-for-profits, and I know that bureaucracy can blow it. And I do worry that there's a fine balance between the communication and making sure that we're doing the right thing on all sides, and not risking any valuable funding that is absolutely required to do the right thing for our students, which is why we are all here. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure what that balance is, but I would not be in favor of holding anything up that would risk these funding dollars coming in. I think that we all have the ability to work together from this point forward to solve any issues or concerns that may be in the grants. And perhaps, even if the grant committees do not meet on a regular basis, just getting the list of grants that are upcoming and reviewing them may be of value, so that you can be, and share with us more specifically where there might be concerns. Because I know we're talking philosophically right now, but I am just, our funding is so tight, and our programs are so important, every single one that is provided, especially through key partnerships. I wouldn't want to risk them.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. All right, we have one final speaker on this topic, Ms. Moore.
Board Member Gould, I certainly understand we don't want to lose out on any dollars. But if we are bargaining for additional positions that are not in the bargaining unit, if we are changing salaries for people who may work 12 months instead of 10 months, if we are offering hourly wages for people who work overtime that is not offered to our teachers, then we are violating the contract. That's why we are here, asking to make sure that our committee reviews and make sure that we're not violating our contract for the benefit of all teachers.
I guess my question, Ms. Moore, is, is there only one way to do this? Is there, is there still a way to open these lines of communication and completely stay on track? Let's face it, we are all faced with tight deadlines, a lot on our plates on all sides. And I'm not hearing there's, there's a way for a solution. I'm only hearing that we need to do something different.
Our solution was that the grants committee create a variety of different options, so when the grants came in, it would be like a library. And if we needed to do something in technology, we have already written some things that were based on technology, and you could quickly pull those, and there would be a library of choices. That would be the purpose of the grants committee, to do those things. We had grants for vocational ed. We've had grants for pre-K, early, early childhood education. And so if we had teachers focused in that particular area, and they wrote grants when these dollars came available, and you have a 10-day turnaround time, you'd have the options to pull those grants. options to pull those grants from a library.
So I have another question that led me to another question. Are these not grants that we have applied for before in most cases, the ones we're reviewing this evening?
That is correct. Most of them are entitlement. This board employs a Grants Department that very aggressively brings additional dollars, some entitlement, some not entitlement grants, but they work aggressively to bring additional dollars to the district.
Okay. But, but these have, are, 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 are,[738.54]
We do. And what would be the criteria for?
So if the Grants Committee were functioning, my assumption is there'd be regular sharing of information or idea generation, but we can certainly bring your information. I don't believe it's been in that functioning role for some time.
Okay, because that's all I'm hearing. I'm not hea-- I didn't hear one time that they're demanding approval. I didn't hear it. I just heard, "Sometimes we're offered input. This time we weren't. What's the deal?" That's all I'm-- and I think if we're going to have good relations with our CTA, we've got to be fairly consistent with that unless we can say to them, "This came in yesterday, and we didn't have time to get input, and we needed to..." That's what I'm saying, suggesting. I don't understand the input and then lack of input and that piece. So I--
So perhaps it would be helpful, Mr. Chairman, just to share with the board the sheer volume of grants that we have. I think that was in our annual report. We can certainly get that information because we're doing grants every week that we're dealing with. So perhaps there's a misunderstanding about the sheer volume and how regularly that committee would need to meet with a full-time staff that deals with grants. We're happy to share that as well.
And it sounds like that would be cumbersome. And if it is, that just needs to be communicated, I think, to them. We just simply, it's just too cumbersome for us to have you in there. I think that needs to be clear. It sounds like they're not clear on that.
We can get that to the committee through Mr. Howard.
And following in the line of Mr. Rich's thinking, I think that it's-- would be helpful because it sounds like one of the members of the committee, the charter-- I mean, not charter, gosh, that's in a month. The-- dang it, I can't think what's-- what's-- we're sitting here talking grants. Golly, it's late. The Grants Committee feels that they should have been meeting more regularly, so they haven't been communicated with accurately about what the committee was supposed to do. And it sounds like, too, these have been posted for a week, and you admitted you haven't read them. So if they've been posted, you know, and we do post our board docs a week in advance. It gives you plenty of time to review it. And then, as the superintendent said, then after you've read them and you realize what the impact is, and you could call the Grants Department if you have questions in that week. You could call and ask questions after you've read them and reviewed them. So then you, if you realize that you feel they have impact, that's when you take it to impact bargaining at that point. So I think, I think there is some communication that has to be clarified. I think that's all, and I'm thankful that you said yes to that. And I also just want to say, you do have a week to read it, guys. So, you know, read it and decide whether you think you have questions between now and tonight.
I needed to have my memory clarified because I know that when we first started doing Race to the Top, that we, as board members, were invited to go in and sit in sessions where teachers were helping to write that grant. And it took a long time to do that. And I know that Mrs. Flynn and I, it was advertised. We went and sat in on one session. Mrs. Gordon, I think you sat in on sessions when we were invited. There was a collaborative effort that went on. When Liba retired, I will never forget, as long as I live, Jeannie Floyd was so excited. She was out by the elevator, and she was going to CTA to get Ms. Moore to sign on the grant that had been all hands on deck for a long time. And Jeannie really thought she could negotiate with Ms. Moore to sign that grant. In case any of you forget, I think, and if my memory is correct, it was about $34 million that could have gone for teachers in the Race to the Top money, that we got the letter that everyone is referring to, that we were not considered because it wasn't agreed, it wasn't signed to by CTA. So, you know, I need to, I need to see some effort on both sides. I mean, there were some things that were requested of me in an interview that I agreed to do, and that night, something was written horribly about me. So I don't have a lot of trust right now, and I have to be honest. I just don't have a whole lot of trust. And these are grants, these IDEA grants are the money for our exceptional-led children. It needs, you know, we need that for those children. They deserve to get whatever additional money that we can find. And we have to figure out how we're going to work with CTA. At some point, we're going to have an executive committee meeting, I mean, an executive session to talk about what the offer is going to be. I know that CTA is hoping there'll be some changes on this board, but the reality is, until the third week in November, the seating board, the sitting board members are here, whether there are changes or not. And we have work to do. But I'm not willing to hold these up. And I've tried to sit here and be quiet, but I'm sorry, I couldn't do it.
Mrs. Robinson.
I just want to make it clear that I'm not wanting to hold these up either. I just wanted to ask questions. I wanted some questions answered. This has nothing to do with holding them up tonight. I'm all in favor of passing them.
All right. With that, seeing no other speakers on the consent agenda, let me go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been moved by Ms. Gould. It's been seconded by Ms. Moore. Is there any debate or discussion on the consent agenda? All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Showed adopted unanimously. We're now on item 16.01, approval of the bus routes for the 2014-15 school year. This is almost clerical in nature. Do we need a presentation on this, anybody, or explanation? Okay. Motion, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Flynn, did you push your button?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Before we move on, is this on the last item, or is this on? Okay. Ms. Flynn.
This is just a comment that I wanted to make to the superintendent, Mr. Chair. And I've had a little bit of discussion with Mr. Eugene. Based on some of the accidents that occurred and some fatal this past year, students going to dark bus stops, students, you know, crossing, crossing the road in front of a car. I just was hoping that maybe we could put yet another Connect Orange or just some type of promotion to bring awareness to students. Because, you know, students are walking to the bus, looking at their phone, wearing their, you know, their earbuds and stuff, and they're not paying attention. And also, there are some bus stops that I've gone by where the students are right there in the gutter. They're just right there in the gutter. And Mr. Eugene said that you would look, look at that. But I just thought if school starts, if we could just, in one of your letters or one of the announcements that we make, just bring this to the attention of, of parents to really talk with their children and make sure that they're in a safe place.
Ms. Flynn, I appreciate that. We do have in our talking points for the Connect Orange message that is going home to parents, a couple of things like, please ride the bus instead of driving the first week of school. But we will add some bullets around bus safety because what you just mentioned is not in my talking points. We have a generation who will walk in the morning with their headphones on and their earbuds, and so they can't even hear if there might be an approaching car. So we will purposely add that to our talking points, our brief message to parents. Be alert, be aware. Please don't walk with your earphones in where you don't hear traffic or what's going on around you for that matter. Thank you for that addition.
All right. Mrs. Robinson, did you want to make that motion? Ms. Gould, do you want to?
I move that we approve the bus routes for the 2014-2015 school year.
All right. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Ms. Flynn. Any further debate or discussion? Saying none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted unanimously. All right. We're on to reports. Mr. Rodriguez, any report by you?
Board members, just a couple of quick things. I have a, another executive session reading. The good news is, is the one I read last time has been canceled, which was scheduled for the 21st due to a conflict. And so that meeting is being rescheduled for the 19th. School Board of Orange County, Florida, will meet in an executive session to discuss settlement in the School Board of Orange County, Florida versus Orange County on August 19, 2014, immediately following a school board meeting scheduled at 5:30 PM on the ninth floor Superintendent's Conference Room at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center. This meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be available for public review at the conclusion of the litigation. The following persons may be in attendance. All school board members. Dr. Barbara Jenkins is superintendent. Myself is general counsel. Eileen Fernandez is associate general counsel. Mr. Marcus Marchena and Keith Graham is outside counsel and a court reporter. I should also point out that you may have received or have received notices from several individuals, members of the community. They have been working, those that are the proponents for Oxford-Moore, and I guess the opponents of the new school and those that are proponents, have been working side by side in some meetings with Scott Boyd that Ms. Gould has attended. They would like to meet with you before the 19th. You're not required to meet with them. Of course, they want to share with you what the proposal is. When we're meeting next week, I will update you on the status of our litigation. I'll also update you on this latest proposal that they have come up with. We don't know if that would have approval from the county commission, but certainly if you don't meet with them, you will get the full briefing on the 19th. If you'd like to meet with them, because it's, there are no attorneys involved. I can't attend because they are represented parties, and if they were to attend and you're represented by an attorney, that would mean their attorney would have to be present. So it, there are no attorneys that would be present in the room if you meet with them. But that's entirely up to you. It's not a mandate, but it's certainly your prerogative. And on another note, on a happier note, a couple of things I wanted to point out. Our office is now, with last board meeting, I mentioned that we hired the new attorney, but since that last boarding, I'm now happy to report that a majority of our attorneys are board certified. You may have heard that John Palmorini had passed the board certification exam earlier this year, a few months ago in education law. The new attorney we're hiring is, of course, board certified in real estate law. I came on board as board certified in city, county, local government law. And just this past week, we learned that our own Eileen Fernandez is also board certified. So now four of the seven are board certified, which is a significant accomplishment for those that, you know, not everyone that takes the exam can pass. Not everyone can sit for the exam. You have to have a certain number of criteria and CLE. So just to share with you some good news from the legal department.
That is good news. Ms. Gould.
I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Rodriguez was saying, and I want to take a moment to kind of brag on my community. We all know how contentious and tension-building and cats touching the hair. I did get it colored today, just in case you didn't notice. But I am so proud of the community leaders that have come together and had open, honest, and very respectful discussions at the table. Do they agree on every point 100%? Absolutely not. But they are willing to really put their thoughts together and, and want the opportunity to jointly present that to each of you so that you hear it from them, and that is why they've been trying to reach out to you. So I just wanted to brag on, because it takes a lot when you've been in a heated debate or an uncomfortable situation to actually go into a room and have open, honest discussion with each other and be willing to stay there and work out your differences. And they have blood and skin in the game on both sides, and they were, they were very willing to do it. So if you have the time, I, I think they would, you don't have to comment. They know you can't, but they would deeply appreciate any attention that you could give them together, and they, both sides want to come to visit together.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Why don't you just ask Ms. Gordon?
Ms. Gould, we wanted to just ask you, and then, I'm sorry, Christine, about the time, you know, they gave us a time slot that they all could be there, and that wasn't conducive for everybody. Are they willing to do a couple of afternoons, or?
Absolutely. And that was probably my fault because they said, "What's the best time to meet?" I said, "Well, we meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays," so I know people are, tend to be downtown then. And so they were trying to find times coordinating everybody's calendars together to get together then. So, but yes, they are--
If they would consider an afternoon because they did the more, you know, like morning time.
Right, morning times.
But if they can consider some afternoon or evening.
Yep.
You know, I've gone over there.
Yeah. And other days, they were, they're very willing. They were, they were, they had asked, and I probably stressed too much that Tuesdays and Thursdays were better.
Right, but if it's hard for them to come here, and if we are available--
Oh, they'd love that.
Based on what, you know, yeah, I, you know, that would help them out a little bit.
They would love that.
That would help them out a little bit. Yeah, so I was going to write Deborah another note because there was no way in the world I could make those times.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Moore.
This question's going to be for Mr. Rodriguez. So, Mr. Rodriguez, so we're going to have another executive session about the West Orange issues. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a little confused because I know in the past, we haven't normally done that if we were in active litigation. But on the other hand, can Ms. Gould bring that whole plan? And because, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, we could certainly have that to look at, and we know we're going to have an update on the status of the lawsuit, and we're two weeks away from, you know, county commission elections that could actually, you know, bear some input or have some effect on this whole process in about two weeks. And so when is the executive session, and could we maybe discuss all three of those things at the same time?
We can certainly discuss the executive session on the 19th. We'll be, it'll be right after our next board meeting is the next executive session.
Well, then, then the impact of the election has not been seen yet because I know that really, that could certainly weigh into this whole process.
Right. And frankly, I don't know if we'll, we can, we could postpone the executive session if that's the will of the board. I'm trying to find dates that are as agreeable to everyone, and this is the second meeting now that Ms. Gould has had in the community this summer. So after the first one, there was some dialogue. I will also say for the record that in both of those meetings, Ms. Fernandez has attended on behalf of the school board. And while Ms. Gould has been there, she has been an active listener but has not represented to them that there is any authority or, you know, that she's clearly made it known that she's there to listen and consider whatever options are there so she can bring those back to the board. It's, the 19th was the first available date. Otherwise, we're looking at early September or mid-September before we can get the board together for an executive session.
Well, you know, it's going to be difficult for me if you're going to be asking us to make a decision. I would, you know, not be able to do so till after the election, so that's completely up to you.
Anybody else on the topic? Anybody else want to weigh in on that? You know, I will say, for me personally, I'm not sure because I haven't been briefed by Mr. Rodriguez yet what's going to be covered there, but I'm going to go there with mostly ears to listen, get an update. I don't anticipate making any seminal decisions at that meeting. I don't think there are any decision points we need to cross yet unless there's something that I haven't heard. And certainly, I think Ms. Moore raises a good point. Even if we do make some decisions that need to be addressed, by that time, we'll be so close to the election. I do not see why we couldn't just hold our cards close to the vest until after the election before going back with those decisions. It is an executive session. It is a litigation matter. Nothing dictates that we have to go public with any decisions right after the executive Ms. Cadle.
Well, and I have asked that the information that they want to share with the compromise be shared with me, and I'm still waiting to receive that. I have declined to meet, but I told them I'd be very willing to look at whatever this compromise is that the two sides have come up with if they would submit it. As of today, I have not seen that. But, you know, I expect to look and hear and know the long-range effects of some of that stuff in the executive session. But I am, I am not, because it is an active lawsuit, and it has been my practice to not meet when we're in litigation. I have declined to meet, but I have offered them to go ahead and send me the information, and I'll look at it. So, but I haven't received it.
Mr. Rodriguez, any other plain vanilla issues you need to bring to our attention?
Can I remind you once again that four of our seven lawyers are now board certified? I want to end my report on a happy note for once.
All right. Dr. Jenkins, any report by you, ma'am?
Two things briefly, Chairman. One, I certainly want to assure the board that we are working expeditiously to fill any remaining vacancies. I will tell you, the 73 that we were down to is lower than we were at this time last year, and we opened with far fewer vacancies. Here is the issue you have to keep in mind. Although we may have 73 vacancies, we are quite likely overstaffed in a couple of schools where they don't know quite how many students will actually show up. And in some instances, our charter schools play havoc with our actual enrollment numbers. So the truth is, when you get to around 73 and you have 187 schools, you may be fairly close to being 100% staffed. You just have to move some of those bodies to the right places where the students have shown up. And so I want to reassure that our HR department, reassure you that our HR department is working expeditiously. They still have a goal of being at zero vacancies the first day. Let it be known now, though, some of those bodies will be at the wrong school as we get the actual warm-body counts. Secondly, you heard a voicemail message that we were putting out to parents as well. Our transportation department was so excited. They had a new project, a new program going where every student eligible for transportation would receive a postcard with their bus stop information rather than having to go to school and wait till meet your teacher to look on those charts and find their, or make calls to find out where their bus stops were. Brilliant strategy, very progressive, hit a terrible glitch. And so, and so that wonderful strategy and our vendor is taking some responsibility for that. They will be reissuing those postcards, individual customized, so folks know where their bus stops are. So I wanted to mention that as well since it might get to be newsworthy. We wanted to get the word out to our parents ahead of time. We know there were some problems with those postcards. They're going to be reissued, and we got the word out to the media as well so they don't think they are hatching a story that we're not aware of. Outside of that, the next time we meet, we will have completed two days of the 2014-15 school year. We're excited about it. It is going to be a great year.
Good luck with the opening. All right. Ms. Cadle, was that an old button? I felt it clear.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Roach.
Are we at the policy piece?
We're actually, we're close. We're at committee reports. Let's take that--
Let me know when you get there.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Rich. Ms. Moore, communications.
We have been having bi-monthly meetings and had a really great attendance from all the board members today, so I don't really have to go into a lot of detail, but just really appreciate everyone's support. I did have one question, really more for you, Mr. Chair. And of course, a lot of people have to be reminded that we can't always have these conversations away from here because of sunshine. But the board did, you know, under Mrs. Gordon's leadership, passed and sent on to the county commission our desire to put, to renew the one mil. And so my question to you, you know, with your direction, and you appoint committees and such, we just wanted you to affirm or, or give some direction as to which committee or how you wanted to work that effort between now and November.
Well, from what I understand, I'm hoping you'll take the lead again. Communications Committee did a great job with it last time. And, you know, whatever the will of the board is, if you want a new committee, we can do that, but I don't see any need to recreate the will on something that's working well. So, you know. You've been renominated to head the committee. Be careful what you ask for. By the way, you and Dylan, I want to commend you. I had not looked at it in months and months and months of working on the sales tax. I was just, as we were discussing things here, looking through our website by district on the sales tax. I don't know how long that's been up, but nice job. Ms. Moore, nice job. So if you're willing, I, it sounds like the will of the board is to allow you to continue to--
Did you carry the most?
--hit up, hit up that effort.
They'll move, and I second, but many others.
To, well, she's already the chair.
Wait, no, no, we didn't need a vote. We just stated it referred to a committee. That was all.
Yeah. So I would refer to your committee if you're willing to take it on.
No, if you, if you liked those social media ads with the "have pennies," that was really done with Mr. Thomas's staff and Kathy Putnam from Mr. Morris's staff. And we've been driving those out, one message per week. And of course, they're nonpartisan, just informational only. And so, and you've got your disc. So the one question that, that formerly I would love to ask Dr. Jenkins and Mr. Morris if they would put Ms. Kathy Putnam on loan to my committee for another three months. Oh, he's saying no. But we really, you can't say no because she was just a godsend. And, you know, we have a really good thing going, and so we would love to keep her. You know, at least you're not opening any buildings for the next couple of months. So the sneak peeks really worked out beautifully. And I just, it last little part, Mrs. Cadle really started those sneak peeks years ago, and I think Facilities has sort of adopted that as the standard operating procedure with the opening of schools. And I had one at Phyllis Sweet Elementary last night, and I just wanted to tell you it was probably the most memorable one. You know, we all have certain things, and our, our time served to the people and students of this district, but we had 400 people show up, and it was not parents, and it was not students. It was the community that came to the sneak peek last night. And it was just so precious to see their faces, and there were neighbors who just loved looking at their house from the second floor. It was people who were alumni, who had graduated from Phyllis Wheatley in the '50s, and they were so happy. And I had the entire Apopka City Council there and all the candidates running for county commission seat. They all came for the tour. Wife of the state legislator. It was really, really neat to see that entire town come together, you know, and our elementary school on the south side. So it really was an incredible blessing. Staff did a great job. And right before it started, we had no idea that many people were going to come, and I had a call from the principal telling me the cafeteria was already filled up. And we actually lost control of the tours because we had too many people there. So it is really, it's just so gratifying to see the impact that a school can have on not just our kids, not just on academic achievement, but the pride that they walk through that building. And so I really expect great things in South Apopka in the years to come because of that building. So thanks to all of you.
I will say that is one dedication that I've been looking forward to for a long time. Seriously. And Mr. Morris, your department and our, our CM has done a wonderful job getting that school open on time. All right. Superintendent, was that it? On you? Okay. Communications, no other committee reports. All right. Mr. Roach, you're up, sir.
I just had, just had my first question about the end-of-course exams from a parent. As all of you know, these tests, they bring angst early. People don't just wait till March and April to worry about the value of the EOCs, but I just want to, it's happening so fast, I'm learning stuff on the fly here. Number one, the EOCs that the state mandates are 30% of the grade, with the exception of the ones that, the algebra one, which is the, the quick kill. The other one seems like there's board, staff flexibility, not board flexibility. As I understand it, the board will not make the decision on the other one. Superintendent will make that decision. Now, I'm just trying to think about this just a minute. Why, what, first of all, how are we, we've got to be in line with the other districts. Parents are great about saying, "Well, you guys require 30% and OASO is 20. That means my kid's GPA is going to be in jeopardy, blah, 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 blah." So why, you know, I just want to know, do we wait and see what the superintendent does and just say, "Okay"? Or do, being that we don't have a choice, I suppose, in it anyway, we just say, "Okay." But it seems like there's got to be some type of baseline on making that kind of decision. You know, I always, I always feel like what a teacher teaches from bell to bell, from first day to last day, is the most important thing. And those grades, to me, are the most important indicator of how a child did. The end-of-course exam, of course, is designed by a group of teachers with the very similar format as the other standardized tests, and I, and I worry about that. If it's, if we go with the 30%, then we're-- If it's, if we go with the 30%, then we're back to that original comment I had in pre-agenda where a child can make an A or a B in a course and really possibly face a failing grade on that, on that four-hour test or whatever it is. So, I don't know. I'm just registering that. It sounds like I don't have one bit of say in it, but so, that's why I'm registering my thoughts right now, is at least, in the bare minimum, that's got to be communicated to parents quickly and with rationale attached to it. And I believe consistency would have to come into place. If somebody, some district goes as low as 10%, I mean, we, you know, we've got to justify that as rigor, or whatever you want to dress justify it as. So, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't think I have any say in this matter. It doesn't sound like, except just to record my comments.
And Dr. Jenkins?
Certainly. I think you raise a question that is anxiety for all of the superintendents because the state will not take the lead to bring consistency. Rather, they purposely leave it to individual districts. And so, while I will talk to my colleagues in neighboring counties, I cannot guarantee you that there will be consistency because the state opted not to create consistency. It's also why we're doing our own PR campaign, because we've been waiting for the state to pass down a promised PR campaign. We're doing our own now. We actually are in the throes of making those preparations as I speak. And it is, I admit openly, it's like building the bicycle while you're riding it, or the airplane while you're flying it. That seems much more deadly, so I hate to use that analogy. But we will certainly communicate with the board. I have no desire to have autonomy around decisions like that. I will tell you, part of the concern will be if you teach math, Mr. Roach, and I teach an elective, part of the concern among teachers is that they will be treated inequitably with different percentages. And so, some districts are probably going to stay as close as possible to that 30% mark that the state has opted for. Other districts may totally go the opposite direction. We don't have a survey. We don't have a tally yet. We're certainly surveying, trying to find out what our neighbors in the larger districts are doing especially. But we will keep the board informed and certainly take your input before we come to that final conclusion. I apologize that things aren't ready to go at a much earlier state. We're running as fast as we can as things are handed down from the state level.
Is it on this subject? Because, go ahead.
No, I'm just, no. But I have.
Okay. Let me ask this. Is there any further comment on this issue? I do hope, you know, I'm reminded of the famous words of Ben Franklin on this issue, we must hang together. We will surely all hang separately. You know, I really hope that we fall in line with the other major urban districts, because the messaging that would be sent out if we did not, I think, would be not advantageous to us. And, you know, and this is one of these issues, and it's not fair to you, Dr. Jenkins, we haven't had a chance to chat about it, but this does border, Mr. Roach, to address your issue. It does border on policy, you know, and there's difference between policy and operations. So, I need to console the superintendent about it, but on educational policy, we almost always defer to her. I don't think I've ever not deferred to her, Mr. Block, on education policy, but this does have some far-ranging implications. So, we're just going to figure out, the superintendent, how we want to go about adopting this, whether it is policy or not. I will say this, I'm not real good at math, but I was just doing some quick math. If it's 30% and you have a borderline A, you cannot drop to an F, not on a 10% grading scale. If you have a 90% A, if you're right on the border, and you absolutely get a zero on the end of course, you end up with a 63. So, you end up with a D.
You're going to pass.
You're going to pass. It's nothing to brag about, but you're going to pass with a 63.
And that's with a Z.
Yeah. So, if my math is correct, and I'm pretty sure it is. Anything else on this subject before we go to Ms. Cadel on the next? Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to say, it's a tough issue because, you know, you don't want to complain, whine, you know, talk about it in the negative too, too much, but because on the other hand, we're going to just drive students over to, you know, these voucher schools where there are no tests, you know? I mean, if you go, this is just, there are so many tests. I'm like, well, heck, I'll go over there. I don't have to take any tests. And so, it's really kind of a two-edged sword about how we deal with this particular issue. So, I, you know, hats off to you, how we're going to work on the marketing and communicating to parents. There's a lot of moving pieces here to consider. So, I think this is one time, we can't completely say the sky is falling because at the end of the day, if the students, if we've done all this work to systematize some of the different coursework and all the extra work to help the instructors know, you know, what body of language of material they have to have by the end of the year, even if we don't do it well, it still sounds like an improvement. I mean, I know the tests are onerous, and there's too many of them, but, you know, there are parts of this that are good, if we look at it that way. So, hopefully, we can keep all of that in balance. And so, a work session would be good because I think, hearing you all in the pre-agenda meeting, I think we're all, right now, challenged to wrap our hands around it. And if we go out with different messages and aren't unified, that's not going to be good either. So, thank you.
Yeah. And I just want to say one other thing, if you're okay with that, Mrs. Robinson. You know, and I'm looking at the pros right now. I don't like this system that much more than other people do. I'm, you know, I'm sort of got a weird sense of humor, and I'm thinking, okay, what happens when your five-year-old kindergartner pass, fails the end-of-course exam? Does he drop from a satisfactory to an unsatisfactory? You know, and I mean that tongue-in-cheek, you know, but literally, I think kindergartens have to be given an end-of-course exam, so I think it's a little bit overkill. I will say this, and I'm looking at the pros in the peanut gallery right now, I'm not sure it's all that different for most high school students. I mean, in observing my daughter's high school career, in almost every academic offering she has, she has a final that counts anywhere from 25 to 30 to 40% of the grade. What's interesting, too, and so, I don't really think the sky's falling in that regard when it comes to high schoolers or even middle schoolers. I will say, too, it's a very, it's very much a college model. Now, I was thinking back to my college experience. I don't remember a single course I took in college where my final exam or my final paper did not constitute 30, 35, 40% of the grade. And frankly, many of my college courses, probably half of them, you had to pass the final to pass the course. There was no if and. Where I went to college, I know every college is different, but the University of Florida, over half my courses, if you didn't pass the final, you did not pass the course, regardless of what your grade was going in. In fact, the last thing, I'll share you a funny story. I took French my first year, and I was so abysmally poor at foreign languages that I did a really stupid thing. I put off French II to my senior year.
Did the same thing with Spanish.
You did the same thing?
Spanish.
I got to my, because I was always taking 18-hour course loads. I got to my spring semester of my senior year, the only thing I needed to pass to graduate from college was three hours of French.
I did Spanish.
And my instructor was a graduate student who became a good friend of mine. We'd go out afterwards to class. He was only 26 at the time. I was all of 22. I'll never forget, I went into that lab, I took that final exam, and I was sweating bullets. I got my report card, and I got a C. About two weeks after that, I shouldn't be telling this on TV, about two weeks after that, we're out having a beer, and I said to Andy, my instructor, I said, be honest with me, Andy, did I pass that final exam? He looked at me, and he said, not even close, Sablet. I just didn't have, I didn't have it in me to fail you. So, thank God for graduate assistants who go have beers with you after school. That's my end-of-course exam story. Mrs. Robinson, follow that one up.
Okay. I'm going to bring this back around. What I was going to say, when I pushed my light and you hit on it, I took end-of-course exams all the way growing up. We all did, starting in middle school. Once you had individual classes in middle school and high school, you had to take a test at the end of the year. Now, the difference now versus then is your teacher at the time made the end-of-the-year test for what she or he had taught you. This is a standardized test. That's the only difference. So, really, end-of-course exam is not anything new. It's not anything exciting. It's just, it's more standardized, which I'm not upset about. I think, I think that the teachers are a little nervous because it's whether they taught the right information, whether their students got what's going to be on the test. So, I think these first couple of years, it's going to be interesting. But to your point, Mr. Sablet, our kids, my kids in high school, they've always had end-of-course exams already. So, they aren't called that, per se, but they are the one that the teacher provided. So, that is the only difference. And it has happened in middle school. Now, I agree, in elementary school, it is kind of interesting for a kindergarten to take an end-of-course exam, but at the same time, we had tests. We took the, whatever tests they were in elementary schools. It's not like we've, all of a sudden, tests are a new thing. They're just a lot more standardized. And I finished college, I had to do Spanish, and I had a great advisor. He let me take the first semester of German, so I can speak ein bitt of German. Ein bier bitter. Or, bier bier bitter. Anyway, so I can, I can say just any little bits of German. So, I got an A in German I. You give me Spanish III, and I wouldn't have been able to do it. But anyway, so, I'm not, I think we do have some positive things to say about end-of-course exams, and it doesn't have to be the sky is falling. We just have to work through it.
Ms. Flynn?
I think there's a potential also to see the opposite in high school and middle school. Don't we all have the son or the child, or you hear of the person that just won't do their homework, won't do the presentation, doesn't do bad, and then they pull it out at the end? Last night at a forum that we had, there was a concern about the inconsistency of how teachers grade in regard to AP, so that someone's doing very well in class or hasn't done well, and then they pull out the AP class and it brings them up, whereas the person who is doing well. So, I think we have the potential to see that happen as well, so that the student who might not be as engaged in class or not want to do all the assignments or whatever, then pulls it out at the end.
Ms. Gold?
You know, we were talking earlier in the pre-agenda about what, how do we educate the community about this and what are the talking points? And I think one of the opportunities here, the end-of-course exam component does not stress me as much as a parent right now. Giving it, starting in April, before the end of the course really happens, is where I get stressed. Because if my, you know, and Mrs. Gordon brought a great point, because we start that standardized testing really in March, they lose that opportunity if they flubbed up on anything pre-Christmas for credit recovery. And I experienced that with one of my children, you know, a couple of years ago, whereas we thought we had two months of school left, and we really didn't. We really didn't have that opportunity. So, I think this may give us a platform to help shape that in the future and really get that more in line with the 180 days of school we're supposed to be in, instead of trying to give a course here and then keep teaching beyond that course time. And I know that is not our rule. That is, again, something that we're mandated, but I welcome the opportunity to talk about that publicly.
Good discussion, Ms. Moore. Ms. Cadel? Thank you for waiting.
Not a problem. If you'll remember, we had a special order speaker at, I think it was the last meeting, about some concerns about the concrete crushing plant next to Cheney Elementary. And I have had some updates from Mr. Howitt's department, and I think it would behoove us to, maybe in the next board update, just to update us where we are about monitoring and what the acceptable decibel levels are for something like that next to the school. I did get a report that we have found that, and we have the capability to do that. And also, Commissioner Edwards' office and their department is also going to be doing, you know, they're going to be monitoring it also. The other thing, I didn't realize this, and I was told on Sunday at an event that I'll lead into, that that plant's a year away. I mean, it sounded like it was opening tomorrow, but it's my understanding, unless I have misinformation, that the plant is a year away. So, there has been some ongoing things that Commissioner Edwards' office has been looking at. And it kind of goes into a land use thing, property rights issue. And so, I think it would be important for us to have an update of what those acceptable standards are, how we would go about monitoring it on a school site, and what would happen if it went above those levels. Leading into, this community has embraced our students like I have never seen before as far as giving away free backpacks, school supplies. Commissioner Edwards and I partnered on, well, we were, a week ago, we were at the Bethlow Community Center handing out free backpacks, and just one book was there, and school supplies were available. And then, on Sunday, there was another one at the Magic Gymnasium off of Aloma. And it was interesting, because I called a Title I school, I called two Title I schools to make sure they knew. And both of those Title I schools had been provided backpacks by another community group. So, all of the children at these two schools were going to have backpacks from, I know a gift for teaching through Bank of America was one of the funders for one of the schools. I'm not sure who the funder was for Bonneville, but they had had their school round up, or whatever they called it, and the children had received backpacks. And I think the media reported that at Hope International, there were 10,000 backpacks that were available with school supplies. And I know a lot, most of the county commissioners have had, you know, backpack giveaways in their neighborhoods. And it was very interesting. One of the things that goes back to what Ms. Gilbert was talking about, we, in, at the first one, I had a dad come up to me, and he said, my 15-year-old's embarrassed to come. Can I please have a backpack? Because the rule is that the student needs to be there. And he said, I couldn't get him to come. He's embarrassed. And, you know, there are a lot of children in need that are embarrassed to admit that they do need it. And then, we also, which I thought was really interesting, we had some students who were either going to our career technical centers, or they were going to Valencia, or they were getting GEDs, or they were going to UCF, and they wanted to know if they could have backpacks. So, not only did we meet the needs of our pre-K to 12th graders, but also, if you came up and you said you were furthering your education, they gave you a backpack. So, we will have a lot of children who show up on the first day that will be excited to start the school year like everybody else, with a new backpack and the papers and pencils. And I represented the board at the Gift for Teaching kickoff that was held at a Marine Center, and it was so cool because Talk Radio 104.1, the Phillips File, were there promoting, and they were filling up a boat. So, you know, we all think about filling up school buses and stuff. They were filling up a boat, and they were going to donate all of those supplies to a gift for teaching. So, thank you to this community for making a huge difference in the lives of children who will be coming to school on Monday for the beginning of a new school year.
Amen, Ms. Cadel. Well said. Very nice. Ms. Moore?
I had an issue for, excuse me, for a potential work session. A couple of years ago, I had requested a session on VPK, and it was, it was really well-done, and I really appreciate it. And I know in the past year, we've done some expansion. I guess Mrs. Gordon is in your area with the program, and I would just love to hear more about that. But again, it doesn't need to be in the next even month or two, but down the road, because I'm particularly interested in that model that we've developed. Is it Washington Shores? Richmond Heights? At Richmond Heights? And I would love to hear more about it. So, okay. Thank you.
And that's a good segue for me. All right, and that's a good segue for me to ask board members, get in your request for work sessions. I know it's, everybody's very busy, we're just coming back, but next board meeting, we'll have a tentative work session scheduled for you. We're building it. Retreat, we have an announcement to retreat, and here's why. I need to see what happens, or we need to see what happens during the primary. We may have a runoff in one of the races at least. It's my inclination, I'd like to get feedback from y'all. It's my inclination, we have two choices. We can either, if there is a runoff, wait till that's over, but that delays a retreat till after November, or just go ahead and schedule a retreat after the primary. We'll be down one board member if we do it that way, because I have a feeling that race is going to runoff, although it may not. Mr. Roach's replacement, there's, there's four, and actually, Rick, that's true, thank you, Mrs. Robinson. So it sounds like y'all are okay, we'll go ahead and schedule it after the primary. So we'll get a retreat date set, probably.
Unless Rick wanted the new members.
September.
Wait a minute, unless Rick wanted the new members, too, but then.
We're sort of in a dilemma. If we're in a runoff, we don't want to be inviting both of them, so, all right.
We can plan for the school year, and then after November, when we, the new board is in place, we can have an interim, here's where we're marching.
Okay.
Do we need any changes?
All right, then we'll get it scheduled.
Like a mid-course evaluation or something?
We'll get it scheduled for September.
For the test start.
And I have a tentative location, I think, yeah. So I think we'll do it at the, the UCF Center downtown on Pine Street. Parking's a pain, but it's, you know, well, there's a parking garage right across the street. Because parking's not a pain, but if you're not used to downtown, there's a parking garage right across the street, and it's close, and there's a ton of places we can walk to after, to have dinner right after that. So it's close to the LC, too. I don't know if y'all noticed this back there, let me just make a request of you. I don't, I try to adhere as much as I can to parliamentary procedure during those pre-agenda meetings, especially when we have something where everybody's weighing in. But if you want to hear what a speaker has to say, and they want to chime in, feel free to recognize them and say, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear what they want to say. I didn't want to do that till, but it was going on forever. And then lastly, Dr. Jenkins, I have a request for you. I would love to see if they're done yet from Video Services at the next board meeting, the PSAs, if we got them done on the code of student conduct. I don't know where we're at on that project, but that we were going to show all the high schools and all the kids. All right, anything else with good or the order? All right, well, so much for our short meeting, getting out at 7:00. We're back.